Is there a way to let him know so he doesn't rush over here?
Good evening. I call this meeting the Washington County Board of Education to order and declare a quorum. This evening, we have a student, a fifth grade student from Eastern Elementary, Lisa Marie Mendez, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lisa Marie, do you have anyone with you this evening that you'd like to introduce?
Yes, I have my sister and my mother.
Welcome. And Lisa Marie, what would you like to tell us about Eastern Elementary School?
That that place really brings me tears because when I leave that place, all my friends are going to be gone, all the staff members that loved me and taught me, they're going to be all gone, and that the staff member is really great there, and I would love for any student to go there because it was just a great place.
Oh, how wonderful. Well, you're going to be there for a while, right?
One year left.
One year left.
One year. This is it. This is your fifth grade year, yes. And you were telling me that you had gone to Ruth Ann Monroe?
Yes.
And how does that school compare to Eastern?
Honestly, that they're both really good staff. There was the gym teacher there who still loves us. He taught about, like, he taught us Eastern stuff, that what we're going to do there. And it's both a really great school. They help each other out.
Great. So it was a nice transition from Ruth Ann Monroe to Eastern?
Yeah.
So now you're over there, and you're the top dog, right? You're the fifth grade, the big kids. That's wonderful. Lisa Marie, what do you like to do when you're not in school?
Well, I like to help around my house. I like to watch YouTube a lot since I want to be a YouTuber. Yeah, and I love playing with my dog.
Great. And your favorite subjects?
My favorite subject is history.
History. We get a lot of reading, and we get a lot of math as favorite subjects. So I don't think we've had history in a while. We've had some social studies teachers up here, some history teachers, so that's great. My colleagues have anything they'd like to ask Mr. Reiner?
Lisa, are you going to be an entertainer like your big sister?
I want to go to the school that she goes to.
Barbara Ingram?
Yeah.
I see in the back of the room, Dr. Michael just told me that your principal and your vice principal just came in. Would you like to introduce them?
This is Ms. Bechtel, and that's Mr. Fowler.
Welcome. Thank you for being here. Well, Lisa Marie, I thank you for coming this evening and for leading us in the pledge and the moment of silence, and you're welcome to stay for our meeting. But if you need to go home to watch YouTube, you can do that. Okay?
You can watch yourself on YouTube now.
That's right.
You know, we put these meetings on YouTube. So I expect lots of viewing on YouTube. The view count for this meeting is going to be high, right?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda this evening.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the agenda? Seven to zero. And next item is the approval of the minutes.
We got the sheet.
Don't you have the sheet? Mrs. Marie, do you have the sheet? Put the sheet down there. It's on the table. It's a white sheet tonight.
Yes. I'll do it.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move for approval of work session minutes dated Tuesday, September 26, 2017.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any discussion about the minutes of the work session? I believe there are four members present for that work session. Okay, all those in favor of approval of the minutes of the work session of September 26? Okay, that's four. And extensions? I raised my hand. I don't want to do that. That's three, okay. Four in approval, three extensions.
I just would add that I've read the minutes, and I was glad to have them since I couldn't be at that work session. And it looked like the changes were good, so I guess they'll come up at a future meeting.
Yes, they will. They're on the agenda for our next meeting.
Madam President, I move for approval of closed session minutes dated Tuesday, September 26, 2017.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections to those minutes? Are those approving those minutes? Five. Abstentions, two. Thank you.
Madam President, I move for approval of business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, September 26, 2017.
One second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor of approval of that set of minutes? Okay, four approving. Abstentions? You're approving? Okay, so that's five affirmative. And extensions, two. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Okay, that brings us to public comment. We have two individuals signed up to speak this evening. And before I invite them forward, I'd like to read from Policy KD regarding procedures for our business meetings. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged, but not required, to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County public schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. First person I have listed is Pam Faulkner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Try to get the mic this time, actually.
Welcome back.
Superintendent Michaels and President Williams, members of the board. I'm speaking to you again this evening on a subject that I know you will not be discussing or voting on tonight, but that you must be considering at this time, which is, of course, the change of policy that allows the Board of Education to hire a collection agency to take care of the student lunch debt. Now, during my research on this article, I've been assured that by various board members, that the money is owed by families who are not poor and who can afford to pay. And as far as I can tell, this is an opinion, not a fact. There's no way, at least that I know of, that anyone has definitive evidence of this. There may be a lot of reasons why families can't, without money, have not filled out free and reduced lunch forms, even though I'm sure the schools have made every effort to get those forms to them. And family situations change over the course of the year. My understanding is also that the paperwork is only presented at the beginning of the year. And from my family's personal experience, when things have changed with them, there has been nobody presented them with any further papers. I've been assured by various board members that some families are taking advantage of the school system and that allowing them to do this sets a dangerous precedent. And now, again, I think this is an opinion with a little bit of prognostication added. I would suspect it would be very difficult for a family to take advantage of the school system, and there's no guarantee, only a fear, that this would actually happen. Since some members have agreed with me that not all families are, all of these poor families are trying to take advantage, that some of them are legitimately poor, then how will we decide, how will you decide, who gets turned over to a collection agency and who will not? I've been assured by various members of the board that the collection agency will only be used as a last resort. Again, who will decide when the school system reaches that last resort? The fact that there are members who want this policy now leads me to believe that some people are near that last resort. That's why it seems to be necessary now. I expect these debts didn't accumulate in a month, and some people must have been noticing this and worrying about it for quite some time. I've not had a chance to ask what collection agency will be used and therefore who will financially benefit from this decision. But the lunch program can only partially benefit from the collection idea. I know of no collection agency that will do this for free for the Board of Education. They do require money for their work. And they don't, as far as my knowledge goes, collect the entire amount, which means that the school board will only collect a small amount, a small amount, and then that amount will still leave you in debt. Sorry, I can't tell you how much in debt I would be telling the future. So I've attended these meetings, and I've heard that, over and over, when people report that there were no comments made from the public. And this made me curious as to how people do comment to the public. First, you have to discover if there is a policy that you don't agree with, which would require constant vigilance. Second, you must locate the part of the website where you would want to find out how you do such a thing. And it's not an easy task, even for those who are familiar with regular, ordinary websites. Third, you have to email all the board members and write and send a letter to them concerning this issue if you're not an emailer. And a citizen can more easily get a message, a Washington County citizen can more easily get a message to their senators in DC than they can to members of this board. And with this system, it doesn't surprise me that you don't get more opinions. But I hope you respect that I have come to give you my opinion and also that you will see it on the website. And I really appreciate you listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Faulkner. Mr. Nathaniel Phillips?
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Nathaniel Phillips. I am a resident of Washington County. I have lived here most of my life. I grew up in Washington County schools, elementary all the way through graduating from Barbara Ingram four years ago. I'm here, too, to speak about the proposal to hire a collection agency to collect on student lunch debt. I want to focus on two different arguments here. There's a financial argument, and there's also a moral argument about hiring a collection agency. So first, I want to start with a brief story. When I was in elementary school, I would go to lunch in the middle of the day, have a chicken patty or whatever I wanted to eat. And before that, we would all go up to the board and decide which, you know, A or B lunch, which one did you want? We would go, we would buy our lunch, someone would pack, we would sit. And not once did I ever see a student getting a different lunch because they couldn't afford it. Nobody was ever shamed or anything like that for the lunch that they were eating. Now, after lunch, on a full stomach, after a healthy meal, I went to math class. So because I was able to learn a little basic math, I did some numbers. Now, it's difficult without hiring a collection agency myself for the small amount of debt that is owed to me. It's difficult to find numbers about just how much a collection agency is going to take and how much they can collect on average. But I did find some reports saying that some collection agencies will charge 50% of what they collect and keep it for themselves. So I'm going to be a little generous in the numbers that I put together. But if the debt is $45,000, and they collect 75% of that, which is very, very generous, that's $33,750. And if they charge you a mere 30% fee for their services, then you're only collecting $23,625. Now, my question is, is $23,000 really worth putting all of those families through that pressure and pain of having debt collectors call you day by day? So I want to move more to the moral argument now. Many of you were educators and worked in education in your careers, and you understand that the primary responsibility of you all on the board is to make sure that students are getting the best education that they can. And a lot of education comes from the home as well. It's a parent's responsibility to make sure that their child is, you know, learning the way that they should and doing their homework and reading their books. And if a parent is having to focus on a debt collector calling them three, four times a day, then can they really help to make sure that their student is getting the best education? Now, I personally have owed money, just like many of you have, I'm sure. And if I can pay the money, I'm going to pay it. I'm not going to wait until a collection agency is breathing down my neck and then say, oh, yeah, I do have that money sitting in the bank. I'll pay it now. So I think that that leads me to believe that the argument that these families that owe this money, they probably can't pay it back. Nobody wants to sit with a balance on their account. It's not fun, and it's not comfortable. So I'll keep this brief. I just really urge you to reconsider the idea that a collection agency is the best way to collect this debt. I'm sure that there are some philanthropists or just kind, generous people in the community who would be willing to help you come up with a better solution to this that could get you all of your money back and without having debt collectors call these poor families. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Is there anyone who has not had the opportunity to sign up who would like to come forward and speak? Yes, ma'am. Good evening. Could you tell us your name, please, and your address so that we have it for our...
Diane DeLeit. 102 South Prospect Street.
Thank you.
And I'm here also regarding the same topic of the collection agency. I also believe that this is a moral issue. I believe that every child deserves a fair shot, no matter what their parents' financial position is. I think that if these parents cannot afford to pay their child's lunch, I can only imagine the stress that's going on in that home. And to have a collection agency call them, which, as this young man suggested, they're probably already receiving such calls, would only add additional stress to that home. And there is no benefit to the students in so doing. So I would very much appreciate that you consider another method. We have plenty of people in the county that can afford to pitch in and help, and I certainly would be happy to. Another consideration is to look at how the school tax is collected. I lived in another area where every adult paid school tax. My daughter turned 18, she paid school tax. I paid school's tax, my husband's paid school tax. It's a consideration. I think that there are other ways to address this issue. They need to be considered. I'd be happy to meet with any of you and discuss further options. And I think there is a better solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you. At this time, we have board member response to public comment. Colleagues, anyone like to respond? All right, we'll move on to old business. There is none, and that brings us to new business. First item on the agenda under new business is our consent agenda. Mr. Bechtel.
Good evening. Today, I have five items for your review, the details of which were included in your packets. The purchasing review committee reviewed these items on September 21 and is recommending approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements for Zonar GPS system. To Zonar system at a total cost of $52,659.42. Fifteen 12-row school buses to American Bus Sales at a total cost of $1,464,399. The sale of up to 20 buses to the highest bidder utilizing govdeals.com and/or a request for quotation. Network switches to Skyline Technology Solutions at a total cost of $205,431.41. And Lenovo laptops to HCGI at a total cost of $122,925.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Questions for Mr. Bechtel? Discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
Item three, the sale of up to 20 school buses. This is, I guess, more a comment than a question. It just seems as though to me that buses that cost between $94,000 and $99,000 should get more than $2,000 when they're auctioned off at 12 years old.
We typically do. I think the average, don't quote me on this, but the average has been about $6,000 to $7,000.
That's not so bad.
Yeah. But anything above $2,000, we need to bring to the board to let them know that, you know, we're going to put it out there for sale.
Thank you.
How many miles on these buses generally? I mean, ballpark figure?
150 to 200.
Anyone else?
I have a question regarding the laptops. The information that I have in the summary says that each middle school is to receive 15 laptops for their science program. So are there laptops currently, and these will be additional, 15 additional?
I think this is to replace existing laptops, many of which run our probe ware and resources in the science department. The iPad won't attach to the probe ware. So we have probe ware that you have a beaker full of water and ice, and you're waiting for the ice to dissolve and warm up. You actually can put a thermometer that's attached to the laptop, and it'll record and graph information like that. We have a variety of pieces of probe ware like that. And I think that's the nature of what these laptops are doing. Then they're replacing older laptops, right? That the iPad doesn't operate with that unless we buy Apple probe ware. And then at that point, we still may need a laptop, but then we need a Mac. So this is a reasonable solution to continue what we're already doing in the science classes.
Okay. And is that true of the high schools as well? I see that only four of the eight are receiving. So does that mean that four already have? And my concern is equity, that we're not giving to four high schools and not to the others.
Right. I think the board already previously approved laptop purchases for the other schools.
Yeah, these four are bigger, so they have more science classes. So they need additional laptops for their science.
For their science.
Yeah, curriculum.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Guest?
I just have one question. Why do we buy six buses with air conditioning or without air conditioning and nine with air conditioning?
So the six, and Barb Scott is here, who could maybe answer, expound upon this, but the six are activity buses that would be used for field trips and things where they're going to be going long distances. I think typically, our buses don't include air conditioning.
So the nine include the air conditioning. But they're the activity buses, and then the six that don't are the ones that are just for pickup? And that's normal?
Correct.
And that's normal, though?
Yes.
So I assume the air-conditioned buses are used every day still and not just for activities, or...?
Those are dedicated to activity buses, athletic trips that go out in August, later, and then again in the spring for the long trips or for fun activities that take like twelve months to reach and other long distance.
So they're used pretty frequently, then?
Right. The other buses that we often will have air conditioning on are special ed buses, or wheelchair buses, special ed buses. We have students, medically fragile students, that require air conditioning even for short periods of time. So sometimes you'll see a Lyft bus come through with air conditioning as well.
Anyone else? Okay, the motion is to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements as read by Mr. Bickford. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of consideration is the comprehensive maintenance plan for FY 2019. Mr. Prue, Mr. Mills, good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. Mr. Mills and I are here this evening to request your approval of the comprehensive maintenance plan. As you know, this is a sister document to the Educational Facilities Master Plan and is required by the Maryland State Department of Education. So we are this evening here to seek your approval on that document to send down to the... the State Department. And Mr. Mills, as the content expert, is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the comprehensive maintenance plan for educational facilities FY 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, questions? None? Mrs. Fisher.
I know we've been challenged in recent years because the commissioners are not matching our funds for maintenance repairs. Could you give me an off-the-top-of-your-head, a number that we would need total per year to do the maintenance that you believe needs to be done per year to keep our level at a keep a good hand on what our maintenance needs are?
I think our current budget, as it's written now, would suffice to keep up with our deferred maintenance. The issue comes when we use our operation budget to help fund the state CIP. So, therefore, we've had to make budget adjustments. And thanks to the Board of Education for allowing us, when there's a quarterly budget adjustment, to put some money into the maintenance budget, to keep track of that and keep on top of that. So, our budgets, we could always use more money. I can't walk into a building and say that there isn't anything that needs to be done, even in our newer buildings. So, we do have some numbers. I think our deferred maintenance for this particular year is around fifty-five million dollars. It is up a little bit from last year, mainly because we actually right-adjusted some of the actual projects with our last twelve to eighteen months of what we've been seeing bidding-wise.
When I first came on the board in 2002, the backlog of maintenance was somewhere between, like, eighty-five and ninety million dollars. And eventually, that was brought down to, like, between thirty-five and forty. I'd really like to see it go back to those lower levels sometime.
I think I would agree with you.
Mark, I think if we don't see after systemic projects or capital projects, we're going to see this number grow. The other challenge we're going to have over time is if we don't replace schools over time, you know, we start stretching out the distance between replacing schools. Right now, the time between Jonathan Hager opening and Sharpsburg opening will be a distance of four years. If we only replace schools every four years on a cycle of forty-four schools plus a couple other additional buildings, you know, that's going to get pretty close to one hundred and seventy-five years between building replacements, which will increase the need for systemic projects. So, it's something we need to address and look at and work with our funding partners on.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just, if I'm looking at the charts correctly, three is the highest priority.
Actually, priority ones are the highest priorities.
Are the highest priorities.
First, first things that need to be done. Boilers, chillers, roofs, that type of...
So, we're talking about twenty-five million dollars just for...
That's correct.
We have problems. I mean, Boyd's right about that, you know, you're talking about twenty-five million dollars, that they're in that pot of schools that are at the highest priority for repairs and renovations and so on and so forth, twenty-five million dollars. And we're getting zero for how many years out, Dr. Michael, have the commissioners said we're getting zero dollars?
Oh, from the county?
Yeah.
The last couple of years. So, at least two years in a row, we're funding a hundred percent of the local match to CIP.
We can't afford, you know, twenty-five million dollars, nor can we afford a third of that, you know, to really address those things that are, we need help. You know, we can't keep taking that from our operating budget without having serious, serious, you know, consequences. So, I admire what you guys do, but at some point, we're in trouble. It's getting closer.
Anyone else? I have just a few. I'm noting deferred maintenance at fifty-four point seven million dollars and that that's increased ten million from last year. And on page ninety-one, I see that it's estimated that almost four million of new deferred maintenance may be added by 2018 if resources are not used to reduce deferred maintenance.
The current deferred maintenance, that four million will be new deferred maintenance as systemic systems will age. We will have some of the deferred maintenance will drop off for the projects that we're planning for next summer, for instance. So, we'll have some roofs that'll drop off there, some HBAC projects that'll drop off there. But as one drops off, sometimes there's two more right behind it.
Okay. So, I see then on page two, under initiatives, you mentioned a triage process that you have to handle work orders. So, I'd like to know a little bit about that triage process, who is involved in that, how that works, and what's being done then to address the backlog of work orders? And what kind of work orders are we talking about?
Well, we have probably approximately twenty-four different types of work orders, give or take. We'll have an electrical one, we'll have a lighting one, we'll have painting. What we do is the emergent work orders or the repairs will come in first, and that takes priority. So, as we use our work order system, telephone calls, and other methods where we actually are getting information that we need work done, we'll take those priority work orders first. Some of the project work orders will get put back a little further, painting schools will get put back a little further. We want to make sure that we're taking care of the emergent work first, anything that's going to affect a student day. That's what we tackle first. And then on top of that, because we want to make sure our equipment lasts a long time, we are increasing, ever increasing, our preventive maintenance process. So, the equipment that needs to be prevented, you know, belts changed, bearings greased, you know, all that type of work that needs to be done to keep that equipment lasting longer, we want to make sure that we have that as a priority also. So, sometimes you'll walk into the school and see that it needs painted, might need window blinds, might need carpeting. Those things won't close a school, but an air handling unit that has a bad bearing, that'll close a school or stop the air conditioning for that school. So, those are the things we focus on.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I have one more question, and that's with regard to the large ADA projects that have been deferred. And I think that's referenced on page eighty-nine. Can you give us some examples? It's, I think the number is nine point three million dollars, and my understanding is that those projects are deferred because they would involve major renovations or major work to the building?
Correct. A lot of the lower priority, low-hanging fruit-type projects, we've already kind of done, where you put the insulation around the drainpipe under a sink, and those types of things, we've already taken care of. But when you go into a school such as, we'll use two middle schools, for example, Springfield Middle and Smithsburg Middle, both of them have ramps, but those ramps do not currently meet the current ADA code. So, to correct that issue, you'd have to redo those ramps with a less slope than what's currently there. So, along with that, we'll have doors that have less room for the person that might be in a wheelchair to be able to handle the actual doordom. Those are all things that are large systemic projects that are, you know, basically, they're hundreds of thousands of dollars to correct. Hopefully, as we move forward with modernization of our middle schools, for instance, we can address those ramp issues at Smithsburg and at Springfield. Along with that, we'll also, as we're doing a modernization of a school, we'll make sure that the clearance for the door swing is there for a handicap person. Bathrooms, we've pretty much tackled most of those. We have an ADA-accessible restroom in every school. But as we go forward, we would probably increase the number of units in a building. So, those are the kinds of things that I think we have to be concerned about. We take care of a lot of the exterior. We do a really good job, I believe, with our curb cuts and the sidewalks and our paving and our marking of parking spaces, the things that we can take care of with our budget, that current budget that we have for paving and concrete work. But some of the interior renovations are tough to try to tackle.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Anyone else? Okay, so the motion is to approve the comprehensive maintenance plan for FY 2019. All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Madam President, if I might, I'd like to thank Mr. Mills and his staff. I mean, they've worked throughout the county every day, you know, completing thousands of work orders to keep our system working. They also extend the life of our equipment far beyond many other counties, and that's what makes it all work for us at least right now. So, thank you. Mark, and your team.
Next item under consideration is the fourth quarter year-end FY 2017 budget adjustments. Mr. Prue and Mr. Brandon Burke.
Thank you again, Mrs. Williams. This evening, I'm here with Mr. Brandon Burke, Executive Director of Finance, to request your approval of the fourth quarter year-end budget adjustments for FY 2017. By way of information, as you may recall, all categories must be accounted for to align, and budget adjustments must be made to align to actual spending. So, we go through this process, which then further has to be approved by the county commissioners. Pending your approval this evening, we are tentatively scheduled to take these items to the commissioners on the seventeenth of this month. And at that point, we may come back to you with some of the fund balance adjustments that you'll be seeing here in a moment to reclassify some things towards other educational initiatives that the school system wants to undertake. And would that all defer to Mr. Brandon Burke, who can walk you through the adjustments?
Good evening. As you know, our audit has been completed, and so these fourth quarter adjustments represent how we actually ended up the year compared to our third quarter revised budget estimates. And there's a couple on here I'll draw attention to. One is the increase in instructional textbooks and supplies. That was a deliberate move to replace some iPads purchased, to purchase some replacement iPads for some outdated ones that we had that wouldn't comply with our requirements for this year. And so, there was some underspending in the operation of plant where some of that technology work is done. There was some underspending there to pay for those iPads. In special education, we had a little bit of everything we saved money in. There were savings in travel, materials, substitutes, salaries, also non-publics and contracted services. Like I say, just about every object there, we had some savings, making up that three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of favorable news. Down in transportation, we had favorable news there because of higher field trip reimbursements at the end of the year from the schools, and also the fuel tax refunds. The law change last year enabled us to claim refunds for the diesel tax. So, that's reflected in there as well, as some vacancies that we had due to our constant bus driver shortage. And then in maintenance of plant, you just talked to Mr. Mills. We did overspend in that area to include some additional maintenance projects, including the Boonsborough Elementary HVAC system that was over five hundred thousand dollars additional just for that. And then we had some savings in fixed charges, social security and pension. We've identified, the pension is extremely difficult to estimate because it reflects a combination of our contributions to the teacher's system and the employee's system. We did benefit from a slight rate reduction there, I believe, in the employee's system. And we are revising our estimates in future years for that. And also, in social security, we have the savings that employees get a break, and we get a break also on anything that they put into an FSA plan as well as the premium contributions for the health insurance. And that went up eight percent this past year. So, I'll be glad to entertain any questions you have on the budget adjustments.
Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the fourth quarter budget adjustments as presented and to forward the same to the county commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Questions for Mr. Prue, for Mr. Brandon Burke? Discussion? Mr. Ridenhour?
Just out of curiosity, the fixed charges, number fifteen, social security pension savings, are these something that will be recurring? Is this money that we will have for the budget next year?
We will have some of that in FY 18 to probably a lesser extent, but we will take advantage of that when we do first quarter adjustments this year.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No. Okay. The motion is to approve the fourth quarter budget adjustment as presented and to forward the same to the county commissioners. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven to zero, and the student member concurs.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our next item for consideration, the Washington County Public Schools Bridge to Excellence, otherwise known as the Master Plan. Dr. Pugh, welcome.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Michael, members of the board. I'm here to ask for your consideration and approval to submit the 2017 draft Bridge to Excellence Master Plan to the Maryland State Department of Education for their consideration. The Bridge to Excellence in Public Schools Act, in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland and the Commission on Innovation and Excellence, require that local educational agencies submit each year an annual plan. In alignment with that legislation and the State Department's vision for college and career readiness for all students, this comprehensive master plan annual update includes goals, objectives, and strategies to promote academic excellence among all students. Members of the local board received a copy of the WCPS draft submission for early review. The executive summary of that document includes a budget narrative section that provides a summary of the current fiscal climate. This section also summarizes the progress towards goals and strategies for accelerating student performance and eliminating achievement gaps. The first section after the overall executive summary is the budget narrative. It provides detail about the fiscal outlook. It includes information about any changes in demographic and the impact of those changes that may have on the master plan. It also includes specific responses to questions regarding finances. Under the goal progress section of the plan, there are strategies to address any disparities in achievement for students requiring special education services and for students with limited English proficiency and any student group failing to meet or failing to make progress towards state performance standards. Local educational agencies are required to report on any segment of the student population that is, on average, performing at a lower achievement level than the student population as a whole. For students requiring special education services, there's four reporting areas that address the following. They speak about access to the general education curriculum, asking how students are accessing our general education curriculum so that they are involved and progressing at all levels and across various content areas. It asks about collaboration with general educators, how we're ensuring collaboration between general education and special education staff, including joint curricular planning, provision of instructional and testing accommodations, supplementary aids and supports, and any modifications needed to the curriculum. Additionally, it addresses strategies for the achievement gaps. When we do have an achievement gap between students with disabilities and the all-student subgroup, there are specific strategies that we try to employ to help address this gap. We identify activities and the funds associated with those targeted grants to help improve the academic achievement of the students with disabilities. And finally, in that section, it speaks to what interventions, enrichments, and supports we have to address the diverse learning needs. How are students with disabilities included in or provided access to both intervention and enrichment programs that are currently available to all general education students as well? For students with limited English language proficiency, there are three indicators. Indicator one is used to demonstrate the percentage of students, English language learners, progressing or growing towards English proficiency. This is a growth measure. And to demonstrate progress, Maryland uses an overall composite proficiency level that is obtained from the access test. English learners are considered to have made progress if... English learners are considered to have made progress if their overall competency level is .5 higher than the overall composite proficiency level from the previous year. In order to meet indicator one, for school year 1617, the local educational agency had to show that 58% of English learners made progress. Official data are not released at the time of this submission, but we did prepare strategies for improvement in this area. Indicator two is used to demonstrate the percentages of English learners who are attaining English proficiency by the end of each school year, and this is an exit measure. For determining it, we use the overall composite proficiency level, and they're considered, students are considered to have attained English proficiency if their overall composite proficiency level is 4.5 or higher. In order to meet the indicator two for school year 1617, we had to show that 16% of English learners attained proficiency. Again, no data are released, and this assessment changed last year, so their alignment is still being reviewed. And finally, for English learners, this represents indicator three, is achievement on the reading language arts and mathematics state assessments, for which currently there was not an achievement requirement. We did, however, report on how we did and strategies that we hope to continue to improve. Slide seven speaks to an assessment administered requirement. This is part of a follow-up on the Assessment Commission study, where the state gathers and determines what assessments are being used, both at the state level and at the local level, for consideration. And there is a chart that we're required to fill out that gives the purpose, the title, whether it's mandated by state or local, the grade level, subject area as appropriate, the testing window of the assessment, and whether accommodations are available for students with special needs, and if so, what are those accommodations. And our deadlines, the procedures. We have this year two options for electronic submission. By October 16th, provided your input is taken, and we make the revisions, we can submit both by Google Drive or by DocuShare, and then the hard copy, or the final is due on November 17th, after the state gives us feedback, and we have an opportunity to revise. And that is the process.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve WCPS's Bridge to Excellence Master Plan for submission to Maryland State Department of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gesper. Discussion? Questions for Dr. Pugh?
Dr. Pugh, I have a question.
Sure.
On page seven, under the executive summary, number one, goal progress, this is language that we, as a school system, submit, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, where it says the specific measures for success were designed using the rate of change necessary for 90% students to meet or exceed expectations over the time period of nine years, when all students will have been exposed to the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards through the redesigned pre-K through 12 Washington County Public Schools Essential Curriculum. And my concern is this, nine years until we see that kind of success rate for our students. And we're saying that they need to be exposed to those standards when all along, before these standards, we've been teaching our kids to read, to write, and to do math using another curriculum, using voluntary state curriculum, which we were very successful with. So, I guess I'm wondering about the sense of urgency, nine years for that kind of success rate, that just really...
Sure. And I can address that. Dr. Michael will not give me nine years to meet those targets. In fact, yesterday was not soon enough for every student that's with us. Certainly, it's our intention to make sure all students can meet the standards. The way that these were written, we are really trying to understand what the new model for accountability is going to be under the new legislation for ESSA. So, this was our first attempt, and actually, we did it last year as well. Last year was our first attempt to model what would happen if we were using the accountability standards that are mentioned and referenced in ESSA, which basically, the goal of ESSA was to reduce by half the number of non-proficient students by the year 2030. So, we mimicked that proficiency. I have a good friend, Maureen Margovich, who did all of the math for me, and used those percentages to develop what would be our target each year if that was our trajectory. So, that was our first chance at looking at it. Next year, this entire thing and process will change because there will be a lot more complexity to the measures. There will be school climate, there will be a variety of additional pieces. So, certainly, our goals are not that. Our objectives were, our objective with this exercise was to see how we are progressing towards what the state has set for its goals.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Anyone else? No? Okay, then. The motion is on the approval of WCPS's Bridge to Excellence Master Plan for submission to the Maryland State Department of Education. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven to zero, and the student member concurs. Thank you, Dr. Pugh.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Tonight, more in the form of announcements. Tonight is showcase the bands at South Hagerstown High School. I believe that begins at 7:00. I hope to attend a great portion of it tonight. So, for those in our viewing audience that might be seeing this, at 7:00, you'll get an opportunity to see many of our bands perform. I've seen probably over half the bands perform their halftime show at this point, and they're very entertaining, and you'll get an opportunity to see that from all of our bands tonight. Mr. Bigford mentioned that our last board meeting asked about our healthcare report that we said we'd bring back every three or four months at our next board meeting. Staff will provide an update on the balance of the healthcare, a little bit about how we're doing week to week, what it's looking like here in this first quarter, the best we can, and some other feedback maybe about, a little bit about the cost drivers for last year. And then my last announcement for tonight is about pre-K programs. We're constantly looking for ways that we can expand our pre-K programs. As the board's aware, in the past, our kindergarten readiness has been about one out of three students being ready for kindergarten, so we've had a much higher success rate with those students who have attended our pre-K programs, particularly those who have attended our all-day pre-K programs. So, we've been on a mission as a staff to look for opportunities, space, staffing, resources to expand our pre-K offerings, and I'm pleased tonight to announce we're going to take two of our half-day programs at Williamsburg Elementary. We're going to extend both of those programs to full-day programs. That'll happen on October 24th, and staff has reached out to parents. They'll have the option to have their child in the full-day program, or if they prefer to remain in a half-day program, we'll make accommodations for that. I think the majority of the parents will take advantage of the full-day program. Also, at Emma K. Dow, I talked to the new principal there, Reagan Plutz, very excited about adding a program there. When you back out there, magnet students at Dowell Elementary, it's a very high farm rate school, so I think it's an excellent location for a pre-K. They don't have any existing pre-K. Many of the students attended Funkstown Elementary. I think we have 11 Dowell students there right now at Funkstown that are pre-K students. So, we have the space available there. We're going to start a program there, a full-day program for 20 students on October 23rd. The third full-day program we're going to start will be at Lincolnshire Elementary. That also will start on October 23rd. So, we're going to expand the program at Lincolnshire Elementary to add another full-day program. So, very excited about that. A number of years ago, we ran 350 or so in pre-K, then we got up around 500 to 550, many of which were half-day programs. At this point, with these additions and other changes we've made over the summer, we'll have room or slots for 580 full-day pre-K students and another 205 half-day programs. So, we're very excited that we're able to offer up to 785 students, some level of pre-K, the majority of which will be full-day. So, very excited about that. I think it's going to be an excellent way to help close the gap for some of our students that are struggling as they enter kindergarten. And with that, that completes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Dr. Michael, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know that you attended the Kerwin Commission hearing last week. Would you like to kind of give the, you gave compelling testimony about the way things are here in Washington County and what we're attempting to do with pre-K. Could you kind of share some of that with our board members?
So, had the opportunity to testify at the Kerwin Commission, I forgot, one day last week, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday. A number of senior staff members attended along with me, as well as David Brandenburg went. Our WC TA and a couple of staff members also presented to the Kerwin Commission. It was held at Frederick High School, a brand-new high school in Frederick County, a building unlike anything we have here in Washington County. It's quite the facility. The Kerwin Commission was there. There was about 13 or 14 members of the Kerwin Commission. I think the commission's about 20 members testified and suggested the Kerwin Commission consider state funding support for all-day pre-K programs to be available for as many parents that want their children to attend. We also supported the concept of funding be equitable across the entire state. One of the things that Mr. South did and tracked for the last 10 years or so before he left, and Mr. Brandenburg's continued, under the old model of funding, had that remained and they didn't start the geographic index funding, Washington County would have gained over the last 10 years $177 million. So, on average, we would have had $17.7 million more a year available to support student learning. As a result of the last change in the funding formula, we lost out on that money opportunity. So, part of our presentation was to ask the Kerwin Commission to look across the state and make sure that it was fair and equitable to all counties, not just to some counties. So, very much appreciated support staff. There was probably 100 people in attendance, and I think about 25 speakers from the, kind of, the western region for the majority of the speakers.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Michael, for your superintendent's update. At this time, we'll move to personnel action. Dr. Bishop?
Good evening, Dr. Michael, Mrs. Williams, Mr. Stauffer, and board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve personnel actions.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenour. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor of approval of today's personnel action? Seven to zero? Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Okay, that brings us to reports to the board. The first report is a presentation of audited financial statements and the auditor's reports. We have with us this evening with Mr. David Brandenburg, Mr. Peters from Smith Elliott Hearns &amp; Company, and Jeff Yingling, who is a member of the board's audit committee. Gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening. We completed the audit. The audit began in July. We had an audit committee meeting at that time, and Mr. Yingling is here from the audit committee. We had another meeting in September to go over the draft financial statements, so it's been a process that lasted the whole summer, and it represents a lot of work and cannot be done without the support of my staff. I'd like to thank my excellent staff for all their support and help during this process. And what I think we'd like to do is have Mr. Yingling give you his impression of the process, and then Mr. Peters cover the audited opinions and so forth, and anything else he wants to talk about, and then I'll kind of wrap it up.
Thank you.
Hello. First, I'd like to congratulate the accounting staff here at the board. They've done a tremendous job. I've been in this position for a number of years now, and I'm continuously impressed with how well they perform day in and day out, and I think they should be congratulated on that. I'd also like to thank the other members of the audit committee, Mr. Ray Gray, Mr. Al Martin, and Ms. Kathy Vaughn, for their support and their efforts in reviewing the audit with the other staff. So, that's all I have to say.
As David started off by saying, this is a pretty intensive process, and I'm here representing our audit team from Smith Elliott. I'm only one member. I'm the engagement partner on that team, but there are many other individuals that help complete that audit. And the result of the audit is there's actually three reports that are issued by us, the first of which is the opinion on the financial report itself. And as a reminder, the financial report is the responsibility of management. Our responsibility as the auditors is to provide an opinion on that financial report as to whether or not it's fairly stated. So, in that report, we've issued an unqualified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, so that's the most positive result from an audit that you can achieve. The second report is required by government auditing standards, which we follow in addition to generally accepted auditing standards, and the result of that report is not so much an opinion, but a lack of findings in this case. So, we had no findings to report to you under government auditing standards. The last report that we issue, or the third report, is required by the Uniform Guidance, which is a test of compliance with your major federal programs. The school system spends a significant amount of federal dollars, and those dollars have compliance requirements attached to them. So, for the major programs, we test the board's compliance with those requirements, and we've also issued a clean opinion in terms of your compliance with those programs. All three of those reports, as well as some other important information, is summarized on page 77 and 78 of the financial report, and I direct you to that for a quick summary of the audit results.
The financial package consists of several parts. Basically, begins with more summarized information and goes to more detailed information. There's kind of a little pictogram of that, how the report is organized, on page five. I submitted this to Mr. Rollins for design of his new school, but he didn't go for it. But it looks a little bit like one of our buildings to me. There's, so you can see, we have the, after the opinions, we have management's discussion and analysis, then the basic financial statements, followed by required supplementary information. There's also notes to those financial statements and notes to the required supplementary information that provides more details even. And then in the back, there's a, starting on page 70, there's a single audit, which is over our federal programs, and there's a listing of all the federal grants that we received and how much we spent on those during the year. And then, like Mr. Peters mentioned, the summary audit results are on page 77. Couple of things, highlights of interest, I noted that local funding was 29.5% of our entire spending this year. That's down from 30.3% of revenue last year and 38.3% back in 2007. So, we continue to see that slide a little bit every year in recent years. The board is aware of our budgetary basis surplus that we just went through, the review of the fourth quarter adjustments. Page 58 is the page that shows how we ended up our year compared to our budget, but there are other adjustments that have to be made to most of this document to present the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and it can be a bit confusing it sometimes. There's a reconciliation on page 22 that is helpful to go from the fund statements, the gap presentation of the fund statements, to the government-wide statements. But what you have to realize there is that, under the fund accounting, the payment that we made to the Barbara Ingram School debt, the $5.7 million that we paid last, at the end of July, I believe it was, that is reflected as an expense. So, instead of the $2.3 million budgetary surplus, we have about a $2.6 million loss on page 21. And then, the really bad news comes in when we have to add in the liabilities for other post-employment benefits and pension, and that results in a $20.6 million loss on the government-wide statements. I believe that's on page 18. On page 17, you can kind of see those liabilities. On page seventeen, you can kind of see those liabilities. And I want to point out that, that that net pension liability of $20 million is solely related to the employee's system. The state assumes the liability for the teacher's system, even though we are making normal cost contributions of about $6 million a year. They're on the hook for the past service costs, so the liability's going to be reflected in their statements for the teacher's system. But we make the 100% of the contributions for the employee's system, the employer contributions. So we have that liability on our books, and it's currently $20 million. We continue to fund the OPEB trust at $4.8 million this year. Plus, we get credit for the retiree claims that were about $9 million net of their contributions. But even so, the liability for the other post-employment benefits grew about $15.2 million over what it was last year. And that's received increased attention in recent years because the accounting standards changed, and it's not simply a pay-as-you-go system anymore. And so we, you know, as you know, we are trying to make contributions every year to that. It's just like we can't keep up with the, with the growing liability there. Well, I'm sure it'll receive a lot more attention next year when the standards change again and we have to put the whole liability for that on our financial statements, just like the pension is this year. But we can talk about that next year. We'll put that bad news off till then. It's worth noting that the retirees did pay 28.4% of their claims through their premiums, so that, so that's a, you know, that's a pretty good contribution, even, and the rates are the same, but the Medicare becomes primary when someone reaches 65. So that's why, you know, resulted in that their, their premiums actually covered more of their claims than our employee population as a whole. You're aware of the self-insurance fund loss, how that's being addressed, that we are going to work with our consultant and our healthcare committee, and we've implemented a sizable increase in our premiums this year. We are monitoring that, and as Dr. Michael mentioned, we will be discussing that further in the near future. The food service fund had a modest surplus this year after a small loss the prior year, so we were thankful for that. Fund balance is still slightly negative after considering their share of the pension liability of $3.4 million. And with that, I think I, you know, would want to allow some time for your questions. This is a very thick document, and we, we thank you for the opportunity to come and present it to you, but we don't want to take up all evening going through it page by page. But we're happy to answer as many questions as you have.
Thank you, Mr. Brandenburg. Colleagues, questions? No? No? Lots of head shakes. Thank you, gentlemen, Mr. Peters and Mr. Yingling, for the work that you've done for the board. And Mr. Brandenburg, congratulations to the departments for the clean opinions and for the meeting, or the lack of findings is, I guess, the proper term. The clean opinions and the lack of findings. So thank you for the fine work that you and your department does.
Thank you.
We appreciate it very much.
And for the school design idea.
And for the what?
School design idea.
And for the school design idea. Thank you, gentlemen.
Keep David in the finance.
Okay. Brings us to committee reports from the board, board committee reports. Mr. Diallo, would you like to begin?
I have nothing.
You have nothing? Okay. That's a good beginning. Mrs. Murray?
I have nothing, Mrs. Williams.
Okay. Mr. Bickford?
I'm confirming, I think I announced it last time, facilities, or my, my committee, which is finance committee, is meeting in November, which I believe is the fourteenth. Yes, it is, at 8:00 a.m.
Okay. That's November fourteenth, 8:00 a.m.
Yes.
Mr. Gessford?
The facilities has no meeting planned for the month of October.
Mrs. Fisher?
Policy committee has not met since our last business meeting. However, we are meeting a week from today on October the tenth at 9:15.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Ridnauer?
HR will meet at the end of this month.
Okay. Brings us to miscellaneous business, future agenda items. You have listed in your packet, future agenda items. Coming up on October seventeenth, we have a report on student achievement, ACT and SAT data, a school enrollment report, healthcare update. In November, student enrollment, free and reduced meal eligibility rates, report. And then on November seventh, human resources update. We'll find out about our new hires and the success of the new teacher academy this year. Math tech book on November 21st. And on January 16th, at that meeting, we'll have an update on the William Brish planetarium. Coming up at our next meeting date, October 17th, I'd like to remind my colleagues that we have a work session on our legislative priorities and initiatives, core values, here in the board auditorium at 2:00 p.m. Our closed session will begin at 3:30 that day, and we have a business meeting scheduled Anyone have suggestions for future agenda items? Mr. Bickford offered one on healthcare update. Does anyone else have any? And there it is. Anyone have anything that they would like to see as a future agenda item? Okay, if you should think of something, please let Dr. Michael or Mr. Staffer or me know of that. I will move to board member comments. Mr. Ridnauer?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing this evening either.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing this evening.
Nothing.
Nothing? Mr. Bickford?
Okay, I'll say something. I want to thank Dr. Michael and the staff. Recently, a friend of mine who had a tragedy in her life involving a, a friend of hers who was a cyclist who died because he hadn't been wearing a helmet, brought to our attention that she had seen several elementary students showing up for school not wearing helmets as well. And she asked me to ask what, what could be done, and I was really impressed at how quickly they jumped on that. They researched, they did indeed find that kids under the age of 16, correct, under Maryland law, should be wearing a helmet, except in Ocean City for some reason. And they've taken steps to address that in schools, mainly by principals will be reminding students and possibly parents that this is something that they should be doing when they're riding a bike. So I just wanted to thank you for your quick action on that. It's much appreciated.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes, last Thursday, I was able to attend a restorative practices workshop. It was, I thought it was very informative, and I've been invited to Bestur, to a third-grade classroom, to see it in action, and I'm very excited about that.
Mr. Diallo?
Nothing today.
Okay. And I think I'll leave it at nothing. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.